All the orders, the workstation of the city council. And I believe it's for the presentation of the audit.
Correct.
And so we turn this over to.
Taylor.
Taylor.
All right. Thanks for having me back again this year. Um, can, can I share my screen, Lee?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, you got it, Kara?
Yeah. We'll have to adjust.
How's that look?
If we need to, if you guys want to come, if you want to come around and set the funds up all along, it's up to you. I have to pin it off the, if he's going to talk about what we've, what he sent.
Okay.
Go through that information.
Can you guys see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Yeah. Okay. Well, thanks for having me back again this year. I, I want to start out by saying. I, I, I thought overall the audit went, went pretty smooth and I think we can see a lot of. Improvements that have been made, changes have been implemented and, and progress has, has definitely been made. So I, I think, I, I, in my opinion, I think you guys are on the right track. Um, now for what, what we've been working towards for the last few years. So. Lee, Lee and Sheri and the council have, have done a good job, I think, implementing some changes and I, I think there's some more we can. We make and, and, but I think you're moving in the right direction. So. Um, one thing before I go through the numbers here. The audit was done on a cash basis. So basically when cash comes in, it's counted as revenue and cash goes out, it's counted it as an expense. And that can lead to some, uh, based upon timing of that, some fluctuations in the numbers, which I'll, I'll go through here. Um, but, uh. Again, overall, um, I think you guys are on the right track. So I'll go through the numbers here and then the findings. Uh, if you got any questions when I'm going through things, just let me know and I'll be happy to answer them. So this first page here, uh, we have the comparisons of the fund balances over the last four, four years by funds. You can see the big changes here. The, the general fund was down about ninety-four thousand and I'll go through the reasons for these here in a bit. Um, road use down about two hundred and ninety thousand. Lost was up about a hundred and two. Tiff, uh, down about a hundred and twenty-three. Debt service, that will be a point we'll talk about, down about three hundred and eighty-six, as well as capital projects. Uh, water also had some pretty good decreases. And then sewer and electric had some pretty good size increases to, um, going through there. Uh, overall, um, though the. You, you'll see a decrease in fund balance here. Uh, first time in the last, uh, few years we've had that, but we'll, we'll touch on, touch on why that is here. So now we'll do, look at the revenue organized by funds. Um, so the, the general fund revenue was up, uh, quite a bit and that was due to a property tax increase and then you got an Iowa economic default. Iowa Economic Development Authority Grant, um, during the year that was receiveded in within the general fund caused the, the increase there over FY twenty-three. Debt service, you'll see a, a decrease, uh, in levy. It's because we're, you guys haven't been levying for the last few years and a little bit that came in was carryover from, that the county collected in June of twenty-three that you got in July of twenty-four. Uh, but there was no levy this year. We'll touch on that in a minute. Capital projects had no revenue, uh, due to having bond proceeds and the prior year didn't have that this year. Water, sewer, electric, all it increases in, uh, revenue due to increase in usage. Stormwater, you have that new fund there, um, still getting established here, new for FY twenty-three. So this is the second year. And then FEMA, you'll see a decrease in revenue. Um, you had those ARPA funds in FY twenty-three that was from all the COVID money passed down from the federal government. And then this year, the hundred and sixty thousand was more Iowa Economic Development Authority grant C received. Overall, they see a decrease in revenue, uh, from about six point nine to five point six. And this is the first decrease in several years. Most of that has to do with the timing of bond proceeds in the prior year and not having that, having that this year. So, so overall, I, I think a strong, strong revenue year for you guys. Going down here, um, we'll look at the expenses and you'll notice we, I, I go through this by function and not by fun because that's how you guys budget. Um, so overall, public works had an increase. You guys bought a new leaf loader pickup. And a pickup and did some street paving. So that caused the increase in public works. Uh, culture and recreation went down. There was some concrete work and a lighting project in the prior year that you didn't have in this year. Community and economic development, that was up. There was a couple of reasons. One, there was some catching up on TIF rebates because the TIF rebates didn't get. Paid out in the prior year, which we'll talk about in a second. And then there was a grant, the big grant paid to SGA for, I believe they're remodeling, uh, a building. Redoing a building in, in the city. General government had a big increase. That was because those ARPA funds that you received in the prior year, um, were expended as well as you gave out more of those economic development grants. And then debt service increased. That was because there was the first full year of interest on the FY twenty-three GO bond. And FY twenty-three would only had a partial year of interest. So that caused the increase there. Capital projects, you were finished up the Max and Rainbow project. Those were paid out, uh, during this year. It caused that increase. Water, you had all your well projects going on that were paid out there. And then solid waste had a decrease, uh, in FY twenty-three, you purchased two garbage trucks. So obviously you didn't have that in FY twenty-four. So total expenses were up from about fifteen to about seventeen point one million. Overall, your change in fund balance, which is like your net, net income, uh, went down about one point five million. So you'll see this is the first decrease in quite a few years. But again, I think a lot of that has to do with, uh, timing of it. If you see, if you averaged FY twenty-three, FY twenty-four, uh, you would. Yeah, those together, you'd be net, net positive and a lot of it has to do with getting the bond proceeds in the prior year, expending the money in the current year. So. That's kind of a brief overview of the numbers. Does anyone have any questions on that before I go into the findings? If not, I'll just keep on going. So. First comment here. Uh, segregation duties comment, I'm probably going to sound like a broken record. Cause I said this last year, but this is a comment you'll see in almost every small town governmental audit. It's just the fact that there are. Two or three people that wear a bunch of different hats and it's really hard to truly segregate all the duties. This has decreased over the years in, um, what, what has been added or what was on this when I first took over the audit. It's really been narrowed down with changes that have been made. So. Again, I just use this every year as a reminder to the council to be having good oversight, looking at the reports that you're given, ask questions. Um, and so on, so forth, uh, with, with that. So. Moving on down here, um. The bank rec, so this was actually only for one of the component units of the city. I'm not even going to go through it. The city's bank rec. Uh, was actually good this year. So, uh, I took that comment out. No issue there. Financial reporting, um, we, we noticed three things and, and we've talked about this before, but revenue expenditures are overstated by about three hundred and seventy-one thousand. And this has to do with the city showing revenue from the city utility counts and then showing expenses for, uh, the same bills paid. In my opinion, where this comes into play, that, that's a significant amount where it, uh. Inflates revenue that you're not really getting as well as inflates expenses that you're not really having. And while the net effect on the bottom line is zero, where this could potentially come into play, in my opinion. Um, is when you're looking at rate studies and what revenue you're generating. Well, you're not really generating this three hundred and seventy-one thousand of revenue because it's all within the city. Um, and they don't pay the bills. So. Uh, I believe is something Lee and Sheri continue to work on, um, and especially with switching over to Tyler ten. Um, but something in, in our opinion, we would look at getting corrected. So we're not overstating both revenue expense expenditures on that, uh, that front. Do you guys have anything to add to that, Lee or Sheri?
No, I agree with that, Taylor.
Okay. Moving on, the next, uh. Financial reporting comment was there's about twelve thousand of bond interest fees are posted the wrong count. And you'll see down below there, the adjustments were subsequently made, um, to correct those in the city's letter. So just watching where we're posting, you know, the GO payments and the revenue payments and what fund they're hitting and whatnot. And then the last thing we noticed was deposits since the internal service fund, uh, were not being done in a timely manner and are not reconciling back to the deposits. Um, with the payroll reports. So there's a variance about eighty-three hundred bucks. What this is, is you guys have an internal service health insurance fund where you, all the different funds for their portion of the wages deposit. The premiums, whether it's the employee portion or the, uh. Employer or the city's portion of it. And theoretically, as you go throughout the year with each payroll and each month, what gets transferred or deposited into those funds, I should say. Should get reconciled back to those payroll ports. So at the end of the day, what runs through the payroll system is what actually gets deposited into the system. At the end of the year. So. We've come a long ways on, on reconciling various things and I think this is kind of the next step to adding that to, to the monthly procedures. So. Any questions on comments on anything with that comment? If not, I'll keep moving on. So our next comment was utility billing. This, this is a repeat, um. Uh. Going forward. So during the year, um. Part of what we do is look at whether, uh, a utility billing reconciliation is being done. And essentially what that is, is you take the beginning amounts from, uh, the end of the previous month. Take that amount, take what the system charged out, subtract off what the payments are. And see if that, what you come up with that number matches what is owed to the city. At the end of the next month. So it's, it's kind of like a bank rec, but for the utility billing system to make sure that. The system's working to make sure that what's getting charged and paid, um, it is getting reconciled. It's another check to make sure. That's, uh, there is a utility billing reconciliation being done, but there's, uh, large variances that are not getting resolved in a timely manner. I believe I talked with Lee and Sheri, they're hoping to, um. Get that corrected here. I did send over a template that, uh, we use in our audit and other cities have used, kind of what, what we're looking for and what. How we think it should be done. Uh, going forward, but hopefully we can get this, uh. Resolved so that that's all being done and you're having another checking balance on, on the system. So. We also noticed that during the year, electoral charges were under billed by about a hundred and forty-eight thousand during the year. This, uh, currently the city is working on recouping those costs. This has to do with, there's a spreadsheet. That comes from, um, the electric side for the power charge and there was an incorrect formula in it, I believe. And, um, that was, was caught and the state is working on, uh, catching that up. So. That's that comment. Any, anything with that?
Uh, no, I was just letting them know that that part has been corrected. So we were able to recruit that within the power charges. So.
Okay.
Taylor, I have a quick question with the utility billing reconciliation. The sample that you have, is it a, is it a, the first through the end of month? Um, or is it, so for us, we have fifteenth is when our due date is. And at the time, we've not been able to run like reports that go from fifteen to fifteen. And so I just want to let council know there may have to be a consideration where we may change billing dates. Uh, to be at the end of the month or first of the month, um, so we can do a true reconciliation. Cause it's even difficult on sales tax reporting when you have a fifteenth of the month due date.
Yeah, sure. So. Technically, like for our purposes, when you do the reconciliation, if it's easier to do first to the end, that's fine. If it's easier to do fifteenth to fifteenth, that's fine too, as long as it's being done and any variances are being resolved. So. Uh, in my opinion, it doesn't, it doesn't have to be just the first to the end of the month. It doesn't have to be, uh, the fifteenth to the fifteenth. It honestly, it's whatever works easiest for you guys in your system, as long as getting done. And any variances are, are being resolved in a, in a timely manner. So i- it's more of the process of doing it and getting it reconciled, uh, and checking the system. Than necessarily the timing of it. Does, does that make sense, Lee?
Yeah, yeah. The one that he sent us is very less. Complex in comparison to the other ones that has like. Your amount that you're taking in, the payments that you have, the ones that we had before have our late charges and that throws it off because of the way the reporting is. So unless it's going to start doing the one that he sent us to see if we're able to use that one more efficiently than the ones that have been provided from other communities. So.
Yeah. Cause I just know for us, it's like, we can't put in, or running a report, we can't put.
The first.
The first through the fifteenth. And so what we'd have to do is the full month and then you have to back out half the month and so, okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I'd do whatever's, whatever's easiest. Um, we're all for trying to make it easier. It's, it's more about the process. So.
Yep.
Anything else with that?
Nothing more.
Okay. Moving on, uh, payroll records management, um, this. This is a lot, this is a repeat from last year, but it, this is a lot better. So during the audit, there was one EFTPS payment, which is your federal payroll taxes, uh, that, that was not made during the year. However, the payment was subsequently made. After year end to, to pay the amount owed. So part of what we do with the audit is we reconcile payroll and within that we reconcile payroll taxes. Um, and go through and see, did the payments get made that we think should have been made? And there was one missed, but then we were able to look after year end and see that that, uh, that did get made. This is a lot better than last year. So I'm, I'm hoping this, for this next audit for FY twenty-five, we can, um, drop this, this comment. So. Any questions with that?
I would just add, Taylor, again, this is, um, more work that you're seeing that. Um, a division of the duties, um, versus one person carrying a lot of the same duties. Um, this is through the delegation work between, um, the clerk and myself and the deputy clerk. And so, um, I agree, I think your, well, council should see this improving because we're delegating that over. And that's allowing us to do, you know, the check backs and the dual control over, um, a lot of these funds. So. Um, again, I just want to recognize the clerk and, and with the delegation and, and having some dual control over those pieces of work.
Yep. I agree. Uh, moving on. This is a repeat, although I, I do believe from the exit conference. We could potentially hopefully get this knocked out for next year. Um, disaster recovery plan. Uh, you, you guys need one. Um, I've seen enough already, uh, between tornadoes, derechoes. COVID fires, whatever it may be, things happen and you have a plan, um, to not only keep, uh, your data and systems. Safe and secure, but also, uh, at least get up and functioning what you need to in a, in a relatively short time. So. This is in the works, I believe, um, but hopefully we can, uh, get this knocked out for next year and get that disaster recovery plan done.
That's correct, Taylor. We're in the process of, and the mayor's even volunteered to.
Yeah.
To assist with, uh, with the administration of that.
Yeah. Right.
Since you grew up in Marshalltown, you know how important that is.
Yeah, between, uh, was it F three tornado and then two years later it's derecho and yeah, I.
Yeah, the ice storm in two, oh, seven. Yeah.
Yeah. Yep. Yep. It all, all right down Main Street of Marstown. So.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on here, we'll go to the statutory comments. I have to do more with the code of Iowa than the process of the city. So the first one is the budget and I will say next to segregation of duties, this is probably the most common comment I see in the audit reports I do and it has to do with budgets. Um, we had a few issues with the budget this year. So, uh, the, remember we budget by function and not by fun. So during the year, the amounts budgeted for the public works, general government, debt service and capital projects function, uh, was exceeded in total for the year. Then also another thing we test is did, was the budget exceeded before a budget amendment? So even though it didn't go over in total at the end of the year. Was that function exceeded before an amendment? And it was for the community and economic development, uh, function. So, uh, again, this, this is probably the second most comment that, that you'll see, but. This is a lot of functions that, that were went over this year. So I really encourage you guys, especially as you're probably. Really in the heat of the budget season now for next year, um, just really watching those budget reports, watching where you're spending. You know, and if you have to make an amendment, make an amendment, not, not the end of the world, but, uh, it's just good practice to not, uh, exceed the budget. Before you, before you expend the money. So. Anything with that?
No, there's, uh, was a question. Yeah, apparently.
Yeah. I was just wanting to get, uh, it nailed down to exactly what you meant when you said community and. Economic development, exactly what it meant, that meant, if there was something specific.
I would guess, uh, I'd have to look back, but that typically has to do with a lot of your, uh, TIF agreements. That's where that comes out of. And there was a catch-up that we're going to talk about here in a minute, an extra payment this year. So, um, that, but the community economic development, that's where you're seeing the most common thing in there is the TIF rebate payments you guys have. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Moving on, we didn't notice any questionable disbursements or travel expenses that we needed to note. So we're good there. This business transaction, so this law changed a few years ago. Um, we have to note this in a report, but it's technically not a comment. Because the amount for each of them is less than six thousand dollars. So, uh, the amounts to Cardinal Signs and Graphics, Big Dog Tactical and Big Imprint LLC. Those, uh, since they're all below six thousand, we, we don't see that represents, uh, a conflict of interest there. So, um, but we just have to note it, note in the report here. Moving on, restricted donor activity. We didn't notice anything with that. That has to do with the reminder to council employees that. You can't take anything of value from a potential vendor, uh, of the city. Uh, it fits, it has to be less than three bucks, which is, doesn't go very far this year. So I just kind of tell people, don't, don't take any freebies, don't take any handouts. Um, you're yearly reminder of that. So you're not potentially having, giving the. Thought that you may be getting influenced by, by someone. Uh, to, to do, have to say do business with them. Bond coverage, you're all good there. I want to applaud you guys. City councilman is next to the budget. This is probably the next comment we see the most and they were all good. All your closed session procedures look good. Didn't know any issues there. So well, well done on that. Deposits and investments, those all look good. Revenue bonds and notes, this is a repeat and I believe you guys are in the process of working on, um, getting this corrected. So, uh, during the year, part of what we do is we test your rates to see if they're high enough to maintain bond compliance. And for the water bonds, uh, the water fund did not produce the net revenues, which is a hundred and ten percent of the P and I principal and interest due during the year. Um, to meet those obligations. So technically you're out of compliance with your water bonds. Um, I believe though, and Lee and Sheri, correct me if I'm wrong, you're currently in the middle of a rate study to get your rates, um.
Yes.
Redone.
That's, that's perfect.
That's a good thing. One, because you're out of bond compliance, but two, everything, the cost can keep going up. And so, uh. I know it's, you don't want to raise rates, but you, you gotta keep doing it just to stay ahead of the costs and stay in compliance with your bonds. So. Um, I guess as a reminder, when people complain about raising rates, where you say, well, we gotta maintain compliance with our bonds. So. Pretty, pretty cut and dry. So, anything with that?
No.
Okay. Moving on, we're going to talk about local auction sales tax. So your ballot has a third go to property tax relief, a third go to. Streets, curbs and gutters and sewer and a third go to community development projects is how that money gets split up. Um, however, the city is not tracking the disbursements for the community development projects portion of that. So that money is getting transferred to the general fund, but then within the general fund, there's no tracking of how those monies are spent. And on what projects. So we would recommend, even if it's just simple as a spreadsheet, just kind of tracking those monies coming in. So you have a sense of what you've, what you've transferred, what you spent money on and how, how much you have left to spend going forward. The property tax relief portion, that's pretty easy because once you transfer it to the general fund, you really. Spent it all in theory because you're relieving the property tax burden of the general fund. But this, uh, community and development. Um, portion of it should, uh, we recommend getting tracked, even something like I said, simple as a spreadsheet. So.
You know, um, it would be like, um, specific projects. So, um. Taylor, I just was going to answer one of the council members' questions. So for example, we. By resolution, we, we, uh, council approved for local option sales tax dollars to extend walking trails, um. Uh, and just recently we, you had a resolution for local option sales tax for the, uh, capital project at the library. So, um, that's what, uh, clerk and I've been working on is that we put it into a resolution. And then I think I did provide you, I had a tracking sheet of I, the Excel sheet and then we'll, we'll tie those projects in with those resolutions. And then so in the future, then when Taylor audits, he'll be able to, uh, tie a resolution. And then the transfer and then the, the spending of the local option sales tax.
Yeah. So then that way he's able to see everything that's happening within that project itself. And that's something that when. We met with Taylor, that's something that he had communicated, that something as simple as a spreadsheet would work for him. So that's something that I'm going to look to in this.
And more importantly, the public, because the public, you know, their rights, the transparency of how those dollars are being spent. Yeah. Thank you, Taylor.
Yep. Uh, moving on here to tax, uh, increment financing or everyone's favorite of TIF rebate agreements. So currently you guys have a development agreement with, uh, a developer in town to remit ninety-five percent incremental tax revenue. From the properties that they have developed. And during the year, we made fifty-seven thousand dollars, uh, which most, some of that was to catch up for what wasn't paid in the prior year to get that corrected. However, at the end of the year, we're still off on what needed to be paid. So you had underpaid the developer by another four hundred and sixteen bucks. I did walk through this with Lee and Sheri on, for the payment that I believe you guys either just made or are going to make here. To get this corrected. So I'm pretty hopeful we can drop this off. The audit report next year and we should be square away with the correct amount out to the developer. Um, a- anything with that, Lee or Sheri?
We did make the payment. It's been completed.
Okay. So I'll let me knock that off next year. So. Moving on to debt service fund balance. So this ties into why there's been, uh, next to no revenue coming in the debt service fund balance. This has actually been on there since, um, FY nineteen. It does take a long time to get this corrected for the fact that you gotta. Go through the budget process and then get through that year that you budgeted for and finally, um. Get the levy corrected and then get the money spent. So what happened was in FY nineteen. You levied a hundred percent for a GO bond that you also have TIF dollars for. So you got doubled up. This caused a whole, uh, an excess fund balance in the debt service. Um, and right now the debt service at the end of the fiscal year had about four hundred and sixty-one thousand in it. And so this is, this has been repeated, but this is why you stopped levying currently in debt services. You've been using through that fund balance. Um, cause in a perfect world, which I realize we live in a perfect world, but in a perfect world, you would levy for what you need to service your debt. The money would come in, you'd make the debt payments and then the money would, uh, you would have a relatively minimal amount in a debt service fund at the end of the year. Uh, so. With, by not levying, you've been working through that debt service fund balance and paying down your GO bonds. And using previously levied for, uh, tax dollars. Rather than continuing to have this excess fund balance, you guys are slowly working down through it. I, I do think in the next year or two, you'll probably, uh, assuming you don't have the levy, you'll, you'll get down to the point where we can, we can finally drop this comment from the audit report. Um, going forward. So, uh, any, anything with that? If not, I'll keep on going here. So. If not, I'll keep on going here. So. The financial condition, you'll see the TIF fund balance had a deficit fund balance of almost eighty-five thousand at the end of the year. This had to do with over transferring for uh two economic development grants, uh, the programs during the year. I believe I gave those amounts to Lee and Sherry at the end of the year to get those corrective transfers made. To basically move the money back to the TIF fund. Cause if those transfers hadn't been made, you would have had a a positive fund balance. So hopefully this should be corrected. And taken off the audit report for for next year.
Yep, and it'll be reflective on the treasurer's report then.
Yeah.
So we provide to council. So, yeah.
Perfect. The annual urban renewal report, which ties in with with TIF. So. Uh, first of all, it has to be certified by December first, and I think we just missed that cutoff. Uh, during the fiscal year we looked at. So try and make sure that's done by December first. And then the TIF debt listed on that report was understated by about two hundred and four thousand. Um, and again, with those amounts. Uh, as well as the the levy authority summary did not agree with city's records, which basically is. The TIF fund balance, it's this city has didn't quite tie to what was on the report. I sent all my work papers to Lee and Sherry to hopefully get those corrected. I believe they were gonna work on. Uh, either amending those reports or correcting the beginning ba- beginning balances going forward. Uh, so hopefully, again, this is something we can knock off the audit report for this. In the next year or two and get those balances uh reported correctly.
If I can tell, say, Taylor, I'm um the bigger part of the. Um, so we had the SGA, we had um the Iowa Economic Development, and then we. Done this under the urban renewal so we could pay ourselves the city back because we reimbursed. Um, the two hundred thousand to SGA for the property and now um. In order to pay back from that debt, um, the city will levy. But it was um a little confusing with the transfer of those funds. Um, because it fell underneath the urban renewal. So we walked through that with Taylor. So as he said, he provided his work papers so we can make sure we have that correct going forward. So it's a, it's just complex. I don't know how else to explain it, Taylor. I mean, it's, there's chances are we may never have this type of. Process that we have to do again. Um, it's just. You kind of learn as you go along, but then you quickly forget when you don't have to do a process like that.
Well.
I don't know if that's a fair statement, Taylor, but it's it's always new.
I think it is. And this, and I mean, this goes into the bigger conversation with TIF in general. It's. Extremely abstract and I always say that if someone says they're a TIF expert, then they're a liar. Because I I don't think the people that created TIF even totally totally understand it, to be honest. So. Uh, yeah, I I I think what you said was fair.
But pretty soon we'll be experts.
Yeah, yeah. So that's, that's uh the last comment. If there's anything, any other questions you have that you want me to go back over, I'd be happy to answer them. But again, I want to say. I really think you guys are trending the right way. You guys have made a lot of progress, I feel, and I I feel like we're on the verge of even making some more progress here and really get these audit comments. Uh, narrowed down hopefully. And I I think you guys got a good opportunity between now and the end of FY twenty-five to get some of these cleaned up. And hopefully uh shrink, shrink the audit comments going forward. So I I I would encourage you to go back and look at last year's audit report and compare it to this one and it's, the comments were less. Um, so you you are, you are trending the right way. So.
All right, are there questions for Taylor?
Well, again, we appreciate working with Taylor and as we communicated during our exit conference, the ability to. Um, handle the process electronically. Um, allowing you folks to be in the comfort of your office and us to be in the comfort of our office, we very much appreciate it. Um, and uh, again, I'd just like to recognize Clerk Copeford and. And staff. And again, I think this is all coming back to us, our hard work of delegating those duties off, which that was the goal. And um, we'll continue to work in in that direction. So.
The hard work of uh Clerk Copeford and also the hard work of our city manager. Yes.
Thank you.
Hey.
There's nothing else, we say goodbye to Taylor?
All right.
Well. Taylor, your stuff is on the agenda tonight to allow you to file and then.
Perfect. Just shoot me an email here tonight or tomorrow and I'll I'll get it filed with the. With the state. Then the only other thing is you gotta shoot off the filing fee to the auditor's office.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, guys. Let's see you.
Thank you. Stay warm.
You too. Bye.